James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
All y'all.
McKinnon.
That's the thing.
Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors regular meeting to order. Good evening. Good afternoon, Mr. Porter. How are you? If you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. McGlynnon.
Here.
Represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is the vice chair of the board. Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Represents the Townhand District. And Ms. Larson.
Here.
Represents the Berkeley. All members are present.
Thank you. First, we will have a moment of silence and then we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mackenzie Ripley, and I believe she is a Jamestown resident, so Supervisor Eisenhower?
Thank you. Tonight's pledge will be led by Mackenzie Ripley. And Mackenzie is in the Visions Program and an honor roll student at Matthew Whaley Elementary School. She is a member of the school orchestra and plays violin. Her favorite activities include ballet and reading. Mackenzie is the daughter of Joanna Ripley, our Assistant Director of General Services. And so, Mackenzie, after a moment of silence, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much, I believe. Mr. Eisenhower has something for you. Do we have any presentations this evening? See none? Okay. That brings us to our consent calendar, which...
No, no.
Oh. Yeah, sorry about that. I skipped... Thank you, Michael. That brings us to public comment, and first is Mr. Jay Everson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Everson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard, represented by Mrs. Larson. On your board considerations today, you have $235,000 for the marina. As at our Neighborhood Association Board Meeting on Sunday at Palatan Shores, we got done with our business, you know, cleanup and how much mousse we're going to have to get, that sort of thing, and all the talk went about the buoys. Apparently, the Coast Guard is, you know, I knew about this up in Matthews, but it's come here now with the... They're not going to continue to maintain the buoys. There's a lot of concern, particularly as it relates to the marina. I saw into a guy this afternoon from Landfall, and he was out in his boat about a week or so ago and noticed that some buoy out there on the left wasn't there. And my concern on spending money on this engineering study, I have no objections to this, I understand that the board feels that it should be publicly owned, I get it, but the problem with that... The problem I have is that if we spend this money and then go forward, and you cannot go in and out of there safely because of the lack of buoys, this is going to create a problem. There is... Apparently, when they built that causeway, they dumped a lot of the rock that's been dumped out there, and when the tide goes low, boats are hitting it, apparently even coming out of Palatan Shores, even before the buoys went away. Boats have, you know, a couple times a year will run ashore out there without any markings out there. The safety of going in and out of the marina is going to be jeopardized. It seems to me that this buoy situation and the markings there, you know, out there, needs to be addressed first before we spend any money out there, because it'd be a shame to spend any money and find out that people cannot go in and out. And that's it. Thank you.
You. Mrs. Peg Borman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, Board, and other people that might be here. I just come here on behalf of the Clean County Commission to invite you all to our spring cleanup. This is our 40th year, and I have been around ever since 1979 helping clean up these roads. So I'm inviting all those who would be able to come out and help us. You do have to be registered in order for us to know who's coming out. So we'll be collecting debris at Jolly Pond Convenience Center on Saturday, April 14th, from 7:00 to 4:00. We need more volunteers. We can always use a lot of volunteers. We have approximately 30 groups and individuals signed up right now, but I'm still taking applicants to... Because there's lots of places out there that need cleanup. I've found three illegal dumps this past week, and contractors are out there cleaning up some of the left roads that I've assigned, but hopefully we'll be able to find some more. But you can call me at (565) 0032 to register, or you can call the office at (259) 5375. Following this activity of... From 7:00 to 4:00, we invite all participants to come to Veterans Park and share a picnic and celebrate 40 years. Can you believe 40 years? It's hard for me. But anyway, we're going to... I have a picnic at 4:30, and it'll be at Veterans Park, which is near Kidsburg. Now, if you can't get out this Saturday, I do just happen to have one more cleanup, and that would be following Saturday. I'm not sure about the time just yet, but it'll be on Strawberry Plains Road. We're going to share with the city of Williamsburg, because half of Strawberry Plains is under James City County. So that... You can call the office for that at (259) 5375. So we hope to see each one of you come out and enjoy the picnic with us and meet all the volunteers that we're hoping are going to show up. But we don't want the whole county showing up, only the participants that have come out to, you know, help us clean up. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and let's try to maybe curb the litter problem completely, so we don't have to have cleanups, and there's nothing like a cleanup day that'll get you to think about littering ever again. When you pick up your 3,000th cigarette butt, you'll... If you ever see a smoker, you'll run chasing them and tell them to stop putting them on the ground. So with that, that brings us to... We have no presentations this evening. That brings us to the consent calendar. Our consent calendar this evening is minutes adoption and the grant award Department of Motor Vehicles radar units. Is there a... I can read the minutes. Adoption would be 0227-18, 0313-18, 0316-18, and 0327-18. Is there a motion?
Move the adoption to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynnon.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. With that, that brings us to our public hearings, and first on our agenda is the FY 2019-2020 budget, and I am going to... First, we will hear from Sharon Day, who's going to give the staff presentation, and then I will open the public hearing. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I wanted to start off with, as you know, the county does prepare a two-year financial plan with the first year of that plan adopted and appropriated by the Board of Supervisors and the second year included to show the estimates of the needs for the following year. Tonight's presentation will provide highlights from the interim county administrator's proposed budget focusing primarily on fiscal year 2019, which begins this July 1st, 2018, and ends on June 30th, 2019. Starting with the general fund, which is the county's main operating fund, the total fiscal year 2019 proposed budget is $204.9 million, which represents a 4.2% increase over the current year's budget. The proposed budget does include new legislation, specifically Senate Bill 942, which would increase the sales tax in the historic triangle by 1%. A 1% increase in the sales tax would equate to approximately $11 million. However, as required by that legislation, one half of that amount, approximately $5.5 million, would remain at the state level to be used specifically for tourism-related activities in the historic triangle. The other half, also $5.5 million, would be remitted back to the localities to be used at its discretion. It's important to mention that as of last night, it is our understanding that the governor has made amendments to that bill, and the General Assembly will reconvene on April 18th to address those amendments. Because the proposed budget was released on March 30th, and Senate Bill 942 continues to evolve, there will likely be changes to the budget as we progress through the budget cycle this year. Moving on to more details on the revenue side of the general fund budget, the vast majority of the county's revenue is derived from real estate and personal property taxes. Those equate to approximately $131 million, or approximately 2/3 of the county's total budget. The next largest contributor is the other local taxes at approximately $29.3 million for fiscal year 19. That amount does include the additional $5.5 million in sales tax from the evolving Senate Bill 942 legislation. To show the budget in a different way, for each dollar collected, 64 cents, again, comes from the general property taxes, 9 cents comes from state and federal sources, primarily the compensation board for the constitutional offices, and all other sources combined is approximately 27 cents on the dollar. As you know, the county does have a biannual reassessment process. Fiscal year 2019 was a general reassessment year, and the results of that reassessment is less than a 1% increase in the overall values. To put that in perspective, of the total taxable parcels, about 44% received a change notice. And to quantify that, it's approximately 14,000 out of 33,000 taxable parcels. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, I had mentioned Senate Bill 942 previously on the revenue overview. Included on the expenditure side of the budget are the proposed uses of those funds, each one directly tied to the county's recently adopted strategic plan. Those items that are on this list were isolated and identified as strategic plan operating initiatives, and the additional sales tax provides an opportunity for the county to move forward with some of those initiatives and move forward in fiscal year 19. First, the tax rate was advertised at the current rate at 84 cents. However, the proposed budget recommends reducing the real estate tax rate by 2 cents, from 84 cents to 82 cents. On the school side of funding, it's recommended that an additional $1.4 million be allocated for school operations, for five school buses related to the opening of James Blair Middle School, and to redesign school entrances that were in out years in the CIP plan. It's proposed that we move that forward due to safety concerns. Also included is an office space needs study and a building security improvements. It's proposed to make the safety improvements to existing facilities first, and then perhaps in a later year, move forward with a master facilities plan to address future needs of the county. Also included for public services are six new firefighter positions tied to the potential opening of a sixth fire station that's included in the county's capital plan, and three police officer positions in anticipation of having a sixth police zone. Both of these initiatives are to address demands for services and to improve our response times. Also included is the replacement of the emergency radio system, the portable radios that are used by our fire department and our police officers. Also included in the sales tax funding is the project management funding for surety bond pools, and also a cumulative impact study focused on the primary service area. The county's operating fund is broken down into categories, or what we commonly refer to as departments. At $108.2 million, the school division receives the largest allocation of the budget, which represents about 53%. That funding helps to cover operations of the schools, as well as the debt service on the school's capital projects. Public Safety receives the second largest allocation at $26.6 million, and that represents approximately 13% of the budget. Similar to revenue, we wanted to show where the money is allocated. Here again, for every dollar that's collected, about 2/3, or 66 cents, is allocated to the school division and public safety, leaving the remaining third to be split between all other functions of the county. That remaining third includes areas such as general services, who provides support services to areas such as public safety and the fleet area. They also are responsible for maintaining all of the county's buildings and infrastructure. That other third that I referred to also funds the capital maintenance and the debt service on the county's capital projects. So thinking of the budget as one would perhaps our checkbook, we wanted to demonstrate how the money is distributed. The average home in the county is valued at approximately $330,000. That equates to approximately $2,700 annually, or 225 monthly, in real estate taxes. Of that $225 in the monthly checkbook, $119 goes to the schools, $27 goes to public safety, and the balance, about $79, goes to everything else. Moving forward with the strategic plan, as you're aware, the strategic plan does contain seven goals, and next, we're going to highlight some of the more significant allocation of resources from the budget to address several operational initiatives that are tied to the goals within the strategic plan. So one of the first goals addresses modern infrastructure, facilities, and technology systems. In the function of parks and recreation, funding has been proposed for the replacement of existing fitness machines in the James City County Rec Center, as well as providing various supplies and equipment in the expanded space that had previously been occupied by Centerra Physical Therapy. Also included is funding to replace several of the county's software system, specifically community development, general services, as well as the county's financial software. Effective for 2019, one of the enhanced technology platforms will be a permitting and inspection software system for community development and general services. All county departments involved in the review process, as well as contractors, builders, and developers, will all be able to access the system. In order to defray the cost of that system, a 5% fee is proposed, and a separate public hearing on that fee will be held tonight. Under modern infrastructure, also included in the budget is approximately $2.6 million in the county's continued efforts for stormwater projects. The areas specifically identified are Toano, Woodland Farms, and the Grove area. In terms of protecting the community's character in the enhanced built environment, as you know, every five years, the county updates its comprehensive plan. Funding has been included in 2019 in order to fulfill that. Also included is a new inspector position to address ongoing demand for inspections, and a housing rehab specialist to address findings as a result of the county's 2016 housing condition study. For expanding and diversifying the local economy included in the county's CIP for 2019 is the replacement of the artificial turf at War Hill Sports Complex. And because that sports complex is used for various sporting events, often attended by tourists, we're able to pay for approximately 50% of the replacement with tourism dollars. For exceptional public services, the budget also includes the restoration of annual physicals for police and fire personnel. The superintendent requested $5.2 million in additional operational support, and the proposed budget fully funds that request. Also included in that $5.2 million is a shifting of debt service of $2.4 million from previously allocated debt service to operations because of the paydown of outstanding debt, and that operational money will go towards the opening of James Blair Middle School. During 2018, the county has been going through a compensation and classification study on its current pay plan. The results of that study have been incorporated in the county's two-year financial plan. The compensation study implementation would adjust approximately 585 positions for a total cost of approximately $1.2 million. The proposed budget includes a phase-in approach over the next two years, first addressing all positions to bring them up to the minimum salary of the new range, and then moving those positions toward market, but capped at $750 for fiscal year 19. To continue to ensure that the county doesn't fall behind the market yet again, and because not all positions are being adjusted by the compensation study, the budget also proposes a 2% raise effective for October 1st, 2018. It's important to note here that we were able to incorporate all of these personnel changes with a minimum financial impact, primarily due to savings from turnover, as well as several reorganizations that occurred over the last two years, which resulted in several efficiencies. And in closing, I wanted to note several opportunities for the public to receive additional information on the budget, as well as to provide input on the budget. First, this Thursday at April 12th at 6:30 PM, we'll have a community meeting at Legacy Hall. A second community meeting will occur on April 16th at 6:30 PM at Croker Library. There are two work sessions that will also be held on the budget during April. The specific dates will be decided tonight, and the times will also be set. And currently, the budget is scheduled for adoption in May, on May 8th at 5:00 PM, in this location, Building F of Government County Complex. I wanted to also mention that the budget is available on the website. Our budget document includes summary information, and includes departmental information, and it also includes line-by-line information. Comments can be sent to the Board at board@jamescitycountyvirginia.gov. And finally, I wanted to remind the Board to please open and close the public hearing on the budget tonight, which will immediately follow my presentation.
Thank you. Questions? Staff at this time? All right. With that, I will open the budget public hearing, and our first speaker this evening is Sally Wolf.
Thank you for permitting me to speak tonight. My name is Sally Wolf. I serve as the Chair of the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission. The commission is comprised of nine citizen volunteers. As a city resident, I am joined by three members, Bob Leek, Susan Branch Smith, and Patricia Rubline, who are all here tonight. Then we have four members from James City County, Tim Kavaness, Nick Vetros, Paige Bishop, and Arianna Heck. Our ninth member is from York County, and his name is Charles Nurnberger. Each commissioner is assigned to several local arts organizations. They establish a relationship with the leadership, attend concerts, performances, and then they report back to the commission. This system of communication proved invaluable this year. Let me explain why. In the summer of 2017, it was announced that the Kimball Theater would be closing. As you might imagine, the Kimball was the preferred venue for many of our arts organizations, such as the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra. Fortunately, within a few weeks, a partnership with William &amp; Mary was announced, but it still created quite a challenge for our arts organizations. Plans were made, plans were scrapped, plans were made again. This uncertainty, combined with the upcoming closing for two years of one of the other major performance spaces, Vi Beta Capa Hall at William &amp; Mary, well, let's just say it led to a very challenging year. Throughout all of these challenges, our commissioners continue to communicate with their organizations, coaching them on our submission requirements, encouraging them to apply to the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, but also, we provided other funding opportunities for them. For example, we provided our organizations with information on funding options through the Virginia Commission for the Arts. In addition to our usual activities, this year, the commission partnered with the Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Alliance, and we're very grateful to the staff there. For many years, the Arts Commission operated its own arts calendar, and we required our organizations to submit to that calendar. Unfortunately, only a modest number of people ever found that calendar. This year, we asked our arts organizations to send their arts events directly to the Chamber of Commerce and their arts calendar. It is a calendar that is better organized, better promoted, and better utilized, so score one for efficiency and common sense. This was our third major initiative in the past couple of years. This follows the creation of a set of procedures and the automation of our application process. Those procedures came in handy this year, as three of the four James City County commissioners are new to us this year. We use the procedures as a way of orienting our new members as to what we do and how we do it. So how did the year turn out? We ended up with 31 applications, which is down slightly from previous years. This reflects some changes in our community. For instance, First Night and the Virginia Shakespeare Festival are no longer applying for funding from us. Requests totaled about $210,000, which we had to trim by about 1/3 in order to get our books to balance. So even though we spend time tempering everyone's expectations throughout the years, it means that very few of our organizations receive what they request. This is my fifth year on the commission. I have two observations that I'd like to share. National studies indicate that there is a 5 to 1 return on government investment in the arts. When you provide funding to the Arts Commission, you get $5 in return, because that arts organization is using your funding to print programs, to purchase paint for sets, to pay their employees, their employees go out and buy groceries, and so on. So the arts are good for business. But the arts are also good for the vibrancy of the community. The Arts Commission deliberately spreads our grants among musical performances, visual arts, festivals, theater, dance. We spread it around, and we ensure that our youth and children's programs get priority. As we have in the past, the Arts Commission made our decisions based on an assumption of level funding from the city and the county. But as you know, in prior years, with budget crunches, the... But as you know, in prior years, with budget crunches, the funding for the Arts Commission dropped slightly. We're currently at $70,000 this year, or next year, or the year after that, but in the future, we would like to see our funding increased at least back to the $75 level, $75,000 level, but we'd really like to see it go above that. If it goes above that, what that would mean is that we all win. The government coffers would grow, James City County would be seen as a vibrant community, arts organizations would prosper, and our children would expand their horizons. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the county for their support of the arts in the past and in the future, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for their hard work and dedication. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy Matthews.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Dot Matthews. I live in Ford's Colony. I just would like to speak very briefly in favor of the idea of using the sales, the tourist tax, if it is finally passed and signed, at least partially to reduce taxes, and I do see that in the budget, some of that money is to go there. Virginia is the only southern state that lost population in the last census, and I think we need, especially in James City County, to encourage industry and business to stay and to attract newcomers. I favor one of the proposals I've seen, which is the elimination of a tax on sales, not profits, as I think that discourages entrepreneurship and enterprise and the entry of new businesses here. I also favor a reduction in the machine and tools tax, because I think we should keep companies here, encourage them to expand and bring new industry. I think that would be a signal to some of our major players that this is a good place to stay and to expand. However, I do think that the most important point is to lower taxes and keep taxes as low as possible, so I would support any effort that you could make to do that. Thank you.
Leslie Schmidt.
I just want to say that the last time I received a tax reduction on my house, it lasted for about a year, and then the county supervisors decided they were short of money again, and it took forever to get another pay raise in on the tax structure. I want you to keep my two cents. I don't want you to take my one cent, because my one cent becomes much greater than the two cents, and it's also a regressive tax. I don't think that the county should be in the business of footing the bill for people that are in the industry of making money. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you could say your address when you come forward, that would be great. Jay Everson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Everson, 103 Branson Boulevard. I wanted to talk today about the exceptional public services part of the budget. Recently, I read a book called Francona and the Red Sox Years. I don't know if you're familiar with Mr. Francona, but he was the manager of the Red Sox for a number of years and brought us, after 75 years of futility, coming off the darkest day in American history, when the Red Sox traded Babe Ruth to the Yankees. And we went through 75, 80 years of futility until he brought us two World Series championships. And he's the only major league manager in history to have eight zero in World Series. During the course of his stay with the Red Sox, he developed some serious health problems, not only with his knees, his back, and other issues, and he was prescribed painkillers, opiates. There came a time where people close to him said, "You know, Terry, you're using these a little bit too much. There's a program with MLB for counseling and treatment for this issue, because they have a lot of baseball players have injuries and get painkillers." And he said, "I don't know, confidentiality, you know, I don't want this out." They assured him that Major League Baseball would not break this confidentiality. Well, as with any manager, there comes a time when the front office and the ownership think it's time for you to move on. And before that decision was made, somebody in the Red Sox organization told the local press that he was in this program. And in Boston, that's the equivalent of throwing gasoline on a fire. And there was a firestorm, and he was sacked a few days later. He was out of baseball for a few years until the Cleveland Indians had the presence of mind to hire what Red Sox Nation believes is the greatest manager to walk the planet. You say, "What does this have to do with your budget?" I think it has a lot to do with your budget. You're proposing $110,000, sorry, for onsite physicals and other health screenings for police officers and firefighters. Now, when you have health professionals who have been paid by the county, their responsibility is to the county. Now, they assured Terry Francona that none of his personal stuff would ever get out. But I don't think it's far-fetched to think there's a possibility, if you're a supervisor or say for a patrol person, and you say, "You know, I think he's got an issue here," and move him up in the schedule, and have him, and then tell the health professional, "You know, we think there's a problem here," and on the QT, find out if there is. You know, there's a lot of health conditions that are embarrassing, but they don't affect your job, nor your fellow employees. Now, if this is important enough, that we need to have annual physicals with certain testing, they should be sent to their normal doctor. And if there's co-pays, the county should pay them, because commercial insurance companies have the most, the greatest firewall, almost virtually impenetrable, to keep confidentiality on health issues. I hope that you will delete this whole idea about in-house physicals on our police and firefighters. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I see no other speakers for this public hearing, so I can close this public hearing for the budget. So, and we do need to, would this be appropriate time to try to set our work, no, work session days? Okay. Well, we'll wait then and do it then. All right.
If I can, I'd like to make a comment at this point, if it's appropriate.
Okay.
I'd like to start out with a little bit of a discussion about this budget and the incorporation of the money from Senate Bill 942, which is currently a moving target that nobody knows exactly how it's going to come down. But one of the things I have noticed is there's been a tremendous amount of public participation and support in dealing with the fact that this didn't include the public when it first came up. And I'd like to start with a little quote from one of my favorites, Winston Churchill. He says, "There is nothing government can give you that it hasn't taken from you in the first place." This is 1% that would be taken from us, and it would be given back to some of us. And I think our citizens are clearly upset with the way this was done, and they don't support it. I've had hundreds tell me that they don't support it. I've had two say they do. I think that if this thing does become law, and the revenue does come to us, that we owe it to the public to make sure that we consider this extra revenue as temporary and not necessarily guaranteed for the long term, because I think there's going to be tremendous public pressure to either repeal or amend this bill going forward. So what I'm thinking is that I would like to see us take this money and put it into a separate page or part of the budget, and that this Board consider that we use this revenue for what I would call non-recurring expenses. I think we should not allow this income to creep into our budget for routine, continuing daily expenses. And the three things that I've talked to my fellow Board members about on all this is, first thing I'd like to see is, I would like to see some sort of a tax relief. The problem we have is this money is taken across the Board from all of our citizens. We do not have, at our disposal as a Board, a method of giving it back to those same people. The closest we can come is to reduce the property tax rate and give it back to those who own property. Those who rent unfortunately don't benefit from it, but that's the closest we can come. So I think that our Board should be amenable to examining giving some of that back, and a lot of it will depend upon how much money we do get and other things that we should look at. The second aspect is future school construction. One of the problems we've had over the past is, we get to the point where all of a sudden the schools are overcrowded, and we open new schools, and it's a rush. We're deeply in debt to open these schools. I remember one time, when I was on the Board previously, we think opened three within about a year. So what I would like to see us do is take a portion of this money and set it aside, so that when it comes time to open the next school, we have the ability to pay cash for a certain portion of it, and we can minimize some of our future borrowing on it. I think that there was always the concept that, well, when the new houses come along, they'll produce enough revenue to take care of all these things, and we're finding that that's not the case. So here is the opportunity to take some of this money and prepare for the future. And the third thing is, I think that the Board should basically take any other kind of item that comes before them, and I'd like to see the Board really involved in this, and examine on a case-by-case basis what it is that we could use some of this money for that's to the benefit of our citizens. Some of it may be public safety. You know, there may be a time when we want to generate some new police officers or some new firefighters, and we won't be able to do it for a couple of years, but by using some of this money, we could accelerate that and maybe start this at an earlier time period. But these are the kinds of things that I think we need to have a conversation with our public about. You didn't get consulted when the money was taken from you. I propose that we consult with you on how we do spend that money, and that we not use it for just routine expenses. So I'm strongly recommending that you attend these sessions on April 12th and April 16th, April 12th, 6:00 PM at the Legacy Hall, and April 16th at the Croker Library. And let us know what your thoughts are on how we ought to do this. So I'm setting forward an idea here that I'd like to see our Board members maybe comment on. I would think that we could just say, "All right, we'll set up a page, and then when we get into the work sessions, we can start deciding how much we'll put on what, and we can, in the meantime, listen to our constituents, tell us what they think is important, what we should be doing with it," and letting them have their say. So that's my proposal, Madam Chair. I have talked to all of my fellow Board members on this, and we have varying different degrees of, you know, what we ought to do, but I think we all sort of agree that we really need to have the public help weigh in on this, and you can find us all on the website. Please burn up the email. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have closed the public hearing. Now, that brings us to an ordinance to amend and re-ordain the code of James City County by adding Appendix A Fee Schedule for Development Related Permits, and by adding a 5% fee to defray the cost incurred by the county for additional resources and technology to administrate each program. And Paul Holt.
Hi.
Looky there. Paul Holt to give the staff presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. As noted on Page A6 of the fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20 proposed operating budget, modernization of our county facilities will be an overarching task. Facilities including new buildings and roads, stormwater projects, technology improvements, and business process enhancements will affect each resident and business owner in our county. Consistent with the strategic plan, enhancing technology platforms over the next few years will help the county meet the demands and expectations that come from continued steady growth. One of those enhanced technology platforms is the new permitting and inspection software system for community development and the Department of General Services. You've heard us in previous work sessions talk about this platform and some of the progress that's been made in trying to get this up and implemented. The software, which we're now calling JCC Permit Link, will be used by all of the reviewing departments and agencies, including the Stormwater and Resource Protection Division, the Fire Department, County Attorney's Office, James City Service Authority, and VDOT, and will allow for cross-referencing between all agencies for building permits, as well as site plans and zoning permits. As was mentioned earlier, contractors, builders, and developers will be able to access case information in real time from the field to monitor their projects. Other important components include a proffer tracking module, which will track the administration of proffers in an electronic way, making analysis and assessing status of proffers easier, a module that will allow citizens to submit issues that relate to code questions and report violations and requests for service electronically, potentially even using a mobile device, and electronic document submittal. This will be an enhanced process of submitting, reviewing plans with citizens and developers, making notes and corrections in a collaborative way, and that will ultimately help eliminate any confusion with different versions of the documents, and most importantly, will be one additional way that we can work to eliminate the need to make in-person trips down to one of our front counters here at the county complex. Everything can be done online and electronically. As was mentioned again previously, included in the fiscal year 2019 budget is a new 5% fee increase for all current development-related permits and applications. The estimated revenue will be used to fund a new position in the Department of Information Management Resources to assist with ongoing system requirements. The proposed ordinance, while adding the fees necessary to back support of the technology enhancements, also increases transparency by consolidating fee references, which are currently spread throughout multiple chapters and throughout different sections of the entirety of the county code, into just one table that will be located in just one spot. Consistent with the larger budget process, staff recommends the Board open and conduct the public hearing on this item tonight. Following public comment, the public hearing should be closed. The Board does not need to vote on the ordinance tonight. Staff recommends the Board consider this ordinance as part of your larger budget adoption in May. The budget, if adopted as proposed, the new fees would become effective on July 1, consistent with the start of the new fiscal year. Thank you very much. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and here with me is Mr. Patrick Page, the Director of the IRM Department.
Questions? Thank you both. I'm going to open the public hearing. And do we have any speakers this evening? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and again, we will vote on that with the adoption of the budget. That brings us to SUP 0001-2018, Life Point Christian Church. Good evening, Alex. I believe you were giving our staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board.
Sure, and I think Danny Schmidt is here from the Planning Commission, so we will have him up as well. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory Davis of Coffin and Canals has submitted an application for a place of public assembly on 8841 and 8851 Richmond Road, where a horse stable and previously approved SUP for a bed and breakfast were operated. The properties are currently zoned A1, general agriculture, and are designated rural lands on the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. The existing structures will be turned into the main church building, children's activity space, office space, and other storage and maintenance buildings. A future expansion of the main church building would add 9,000 square feet of additional space and 39 parking spaces. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? All right. Mr. Schmidt.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
So for Life Point, prior to the public hearing and during that hearing, we heard from several neighbors and one nearby business that were largely supportive of this program. the applicant was making good use of existing buildings and therefore preserving the character of the area. During the hearing, the applicant stressed the need for a larger place of worship and that this property could accommodate that need. The applicant also pointed out that he had heard of no objections from the neighbors. We did hear from one speaker whose residence abutted the land in question and whose property bordered Route 60 where the entrance to the church would be located. She had a few concerns, including the potential impact of any lighting on her property, and expressed similar concerns about a turn lane that would be built, need to be built, leading into the church property from Route 60. Discussion after the members of the public had addressed the Planning Commission centered on how much of the pastured land on the property would be converted into more impermeable land such as parking lots. To that question, the applicant replied 3.6 acres. The commission also discussed the existing buildings, the possibility of light pollution, the proximity of neighboring residences to the church property, and the needed, and the needed turn lane off of Route 60. Planning staff as well as the applicant addressed all questions, including those of the concerned neighbor. The turn lane, for example, would only infringe on the VDOT right-of-way and not on the neighbor's property, and ordinances already in place would address light pollution. Several commissioners were pleased to see the applicant's plan to utilize the existing buildings and the landscape for the church and other functions, and the Planning Commission's vote was unanimously in favor of recommending the approval of this SUP to the Board of Supervisors. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have one speaker, and that's Gregory Davis, who will represent the applicant.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. I'm Greg Davis, the James City County Law Offices of Kaufman and Canoles, 4801 Courthouse Street here in James City County. It's my pleasure to be here tonight representing LifePoint Christian Church. With me is Pastor Philip Murdock of the church, as well as the engineering team of Peter Sfitekowsky and Stephen Tally of VHB. We also have a number of members of the church congregation joining us tonight, and I'd like to recognize them. Could you just raise your hand if you're comfortable from the church? Some background on the applicant, the staff report and Mr. Schmidt's report from the Planning Commission very thorough. This is a young church in James City County. The members founded this church in 2006 as an independent Christian church. It's grown from about 70 members to now just under 400 members. These are church members who feel called to Upper James City County and have already been at work in our county, meeting needs of the underserved. Their projects have included feeding the hungry, building a Habitat for Humanity house, events for special needs adults and children. The church adopted a home on Chickahominy Road and built butterfly gardens at both Stone House and Norwich Elementary Schools. An active congregation, excited about the upper county. Plans for the properties at 8841 and 8851 Richmond Road are the product really of a long search. It was hard for this congregation to find the right site. Use of the existing barn and farm buildings is key to the plan. It's a relatively new church, and they've discovered in consultation with David Nice Builders locally that upfitting or renovating the barn and, and existing buildings on the property is about half the cost of starting from scratch. And so this opens the door for this young church to establish in the upper part of the county, when if, if they were not able to take advantage of this renovation opportunity, it just couldn't happen. The use of the property will be very much in keeping with the rural character of that section of Richmond Road and the A1 zoning district. The, of course, the congregation meets principally on Sundays. On other days of the week, there would be perhaps 25 people at the church. There are only seven staff members of the church. Bible study youth groups might involve 20, 25 people on any other day but Sunday. This proposed campus that you see in the master plan before you and on the screen accommodates the, the current membership and perhaps growth to 600 with the special use permit granted here. There is future expansion shown on this plan. That would require site plan approval once again, and that might allow the church to grow to 700 to 800 members on this particular campus. This special use permit, of course, does not authorize construction, so the project would yet be subject to site plan approval requirements. As a lead-in to that, however, the church members have met with neighbors, the Teals to the north or west of the church's proposed site, the Laymans on the, on the other end to the east. In fact, Mr. Lehman came and spoke in favor of the project at the Planning Commission. Ms. Jenkins owns the property that's essentially surrounded by the proposed church site, and as Mr. Schmidt mentioned, while we had, members of the church had spoken to her before the Planning Commission meeting, and she had not voiced concern, she did come forward and, and announced a couple of concerns. One was she was worried about traffic improvements that might be identified at the site plan stage taking her property. VHB has since the Planning Commission done engineering work. We don't know what the VDOT requirement will be for a turn lane, but if one were required, there's plenty of room in the Virginia State right-of-way to accommodate that turn lane. Of course, my client has no ability to take the property of any private citizen and wouldn't attempt to do that. And then Ms. Jenkins, the neighbor, was also concerned about lighting impacts in addition to what Mr. Schmidt pointed out. You'll note that one of the special use permit conditions requires a lighting plan, the standard county restrictions on light pollution, light overflowing onto a neighboring property. Mr. Holt pointed out at the Planning Commission hearing that, that lighting plan requires shorter-than-normal light poles for the LifePoint Church project, again designed less light impact on neighbors. That is in the special use permit condition. We've also had support from the True Drummers Restaurant across the way, so we think we have good rapport with the neighbors and, and an attractive project. And just as a final point, I'll point out that I know a consideration for the board is the consistency of this plan with the rural character and the community character, corridor requirements, which is our county policy. This master plan before you shows great detail, more than one would normally see at the special use permit level perhaps, buffering along not only Richmond Road, but also buffering of the neighboring properties using plantings, buffering of Ms. Jenkins' home using berms combined with plantings, and all of this buffering and screening is designed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So the project still faces traffic approval, archaeological study, landscaping plan approval, all part of the site plan, traffic management plan, so making certain we have a plan to accommodate those heavy Sundays like Easter when a lot of members are driving to the church, and the lighting plan and site plan approval factors. But I would respectfully request that this is a project consistent with the rural lands nature of this area, and we'll bring it into compliance with community corridor buffering standards, and thus respectfully request that the board follow the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation and vote approval of the special use permit. Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, there are no, seeing no further speakers, we're going to close the public hearing. I'll look to the board.
I've got a few things.
Okay.
I went out on the site with Phil, and we looked over the site and, and walked the entire area. I just want to be clear that Phil and I are also in the Volunteer Fire Department together, so I want to let everybody know that, you know, we have that connection as well for many years. That is not going to cloud my judgment on this item, because it's another item that I think supports James City County very well, is the Volunteer Fire Department. When we walked the site and looked at everything and looked what was going on out there, and, you know, we talked, I talked to Phil about concerns that any of the neighbors may have and what's going on. He'd reached out to everyone, talked to everyone, gone over everything he could, addressed the issue with the lights, and addressed the issues with the trees and the buffer and all that. When Phil started the church years ago, you know, he, he was very involved and is still very involved in this church, and has brought this church a long way. He's got great members in the church. I have attended some of the services in the church and, and had a very good time, and I just think this is going to be an added bonus to James City County. They had picked another site out that was further down the road towards the firehouse, and that was going to be a tough site to do what he needed to do, and also to have the funding to do it. This site that he found here really lends itself not only to our rural character, but also lends ourselves to a, a church being able to establish itself in James City County without a high cost. So I'll be making a recommendation once we finish our discussion.
Just make a, a comment or two. I, I have had the opportunity to, to meet Pastor Murdock over the years, I think in, in fact, while he was president of the Volunteer Fire Department a few years back, and I know this church has been very active in a lot of community affairs, including donating picnic tables to the Grove Recreation Area that was the site of a playground built a couple of years ago. So I know there's a lot of dedication to the county here. I was pleased to see the Planning Commission's attention to detail on this matter, the concern over lighting and, and the question about using permeable pavers as a way of dealing with some of the potential stormwater runoff, and especially pleased to see that though that's a more expensive way to go, in some ways, it ultimately may cut down significantly on the costs of dealing with that stormwater through facilities outside of the parking area. So it looks like a very good proposal coming forward.
Yes, I'll make a motion for approval of the LifePoint Christian Church SUP-0001-2008.
Eighteen, thank you.
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure. We, Mr. Porter.
Mr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. McCallum.
Hi.
Mr. Hippel.
Hi.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Hi.
Ms. Larson.
Hi.
Ms. Carey.
Thank you. That is going to bring us to SUP 0012-2017, Wendy's Toano, and I believe Roberta Soloff is here to give the staff. You guys are really fast tonight. Robert is here, go.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. David Barlow of CHA Companies has applied on behalf of American DYNC Holdings Toano LLC and Hornsby Investment Company to allow for the construction of a 3,324 square-foot drive-through restaurant on property located at 9210 Old Stage Road, 9220 Old Stage Road, and 9131 Barmsville Road. The property is zoned B1 general business and is designated mixed use on the adopted comprehensive plan. While drive-through restaurants are a permitted use in the B1 district, this use was protected, projected to generate 100 or more peak hour trips per the Institute of Traffic Engineers. Per the ordinance, this triggers the need for an SUP, and the applicant was required to submit a traffic study with their application. That study indicated that the use would likely generate 109 peak hour trips and did not identify any deficiencies or recommend any road improvements based upon the impacts of the proposed development. VDOT reviewed and concurred with the recommendations of that study. Staff is recommending conditions which minimize the development's impacts on the Jason properties and on the county as a whole. Those conditions address architectural review, screening, signage, landscaping, canopy design, and internal pedestrian connections, as well as archaeology, environmental protections related to the sewer crossing, and consistency of the development with the proposed master plan. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the adopted comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the conditions included in tonight's packet. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Couple of questions if I may. I'm looking at your, your map here. Is, I want to make sure, is there a connection between the Wendy's and the Star Express?
Not directly through their properties.
Just that access road.
Along the access road, correct.
Okay, all right. And then I read the minutes from the Planning Commission, and I wanted to clarify in terms of the private sewer, there was, and I'll just, I'm kind of taking this from their notes, that there was discussion regarding the connection to public utilities, and that the JCSA confirmed that its best practices are that if the drain fields fail, and if and only if there's public water and sewer available, then the property would at that time be required to connect to the public utilities? Is that correct?
Correct. If those two conditions, which are not satisfied right now, there is not public water and sewer that far down.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure I read that right. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening. So that was our March meeting when we discussed the Wendy's SUP. Other than the planning staff report by Ms. Soloff that night, the only other speaker at the podium was Ms. Ottwell of CHA Companies, and she was in support of the SUP application. CHA Companies were the party that had applied for the SUP. Most of, most of the deliberating by the commissioners centered on the particulars associated with the large-scale septic system for the fast-food restaurant, and, and on the entrance driveway as well. With businesses already in close proximity to the proposed Wendy's site, and likely more to come in the future, several commissioners were curious as to why the area wasn't be considered to be tied into water and sewer, since this section of the county is included in the PSA, or Primary Service Area. Staff responded that existing lines unfortunately were nearly a mile away from this location, and that it would not be economically feasible for the applicant to achieve the connection. The commission, the, a commissioner also wanted to know from staff if the property could accommodate a backup drain field for the large septic system, and the response by staff was in the affirmative. Finally, a member of the commission inquired about the entrance exception waiver, as the Wendy's would need a driveway next to an existing driveway from an already established business, the Star Express. Staff responded by saying that this particular case would be reviewed by VDOT at the site plan stage. So we, the Planning Commission, as you know, recommended six to one in favor of this SUP. The one commissioner who voted nay was one who had expressed concerns about the drain field and some of the trenching through the RPA or Resource Protection Area, but we voted six to one in favor.
Questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I should note that I do have two cards here from the, the construction, the Wendy's construction manager and from CHA. If needed, would you all like me to open the hearing to speak to the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Open this public hearing, and I have Scott Jones and Arwin Ottwell. Probably they could come together, and then if there's questions. Perhaps if you could explain your, your position, that would, that would be, then that we would know where to address the questions.
Okay, I'm Arwin Ottwell. I'm with CHA. We're the designer, I'm the lead designer for the Wendy's project. This is Scott Jones. He is the project manager for the Wendy's Corporation, so we work closely together on this project.
Thank you. Questions?
Questions. Question on, and it may be a Health Department question. I know with our residential septic systems, we're required by law to pump every five years. On y'all's system, do y'all know what the Health Department's going to require on pumping?
I know that there have been discussions with the Department of Health. I was not in those meetings, so I couldn't tell you specifically, but they, they've put on certainly very specific demands as to what we had to meet for the septic system. We've, we've been working on this project for three years. This is probably the longest Wendy's project ever because of the site constraints.
Right.
So I couldn't tell you specifically, but I know that they're being worked out.
Thank you, I was just curious to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you both. All right, any further discussion?
I had one question, and I don't know who on staff, it's more generic. How far and in what direction is the nearest water and sewer connection? And the reason I ask this is because if memory serves me correctly, I know this is in the PSA. It's at the junction of Interstate 227 exit, and I believe we have an economic opportunity property designated in fairly close proximity, and to have water and sewer a considerable distance away will necessarily limit what we could do within the PSA where we really want some of this stuff to occur. So I'm, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to get a feel for... So I'm thinking, I'm just trying to get a feel for what direction it is, and maybe the board ought to, when we get to our JCSA meeting, start thinking about this.
The first answer is very easy. It's about 3,600 feet away, and we believe that it's southeast on Barmsville Road.
Okay, down Barmsville Road.
We can confirm that for the board.
Okay. Yeah, there are a couple of developments down there, I guess, housing developments, so that's probably the closest place then. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Porter.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlynn.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Carey.
Thank you. Before we go to our next item, I do want to thank Mr. Schmidt for coming this evening representing the planning commission. We also have Mona Foley here, the clerk of the Circuit Court. I know Chief Reinheimer was here earlier. We have Robin Bledsoe and Marshall Warner from our EDA and several members of staff, so thank you all. But that does bring us to the transfer of the James River Commerce Center parcels to the EDA. Mr. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. If I can see my thing, I'll be good. In December, the county purchased two parcels of land in the James River Commerce Park from Williamsburg Development Incorporated. One of the parcels is at eighty-nine fifteen Columbia Drive, and it's approximately 28.9 acres. The other parcel is located at seventeen sixteen Endeavor Drive, and it's approximately 9.86 acres, and it is adjacent to a parcel already owned by the James City County Economic Development Authority. And the staff recommends, and I recommend, that these two parcels be given to, transferred to the EDA for both Office of Economic Development and the James City County Economic Development Authority to develop them for sale as, for sale as economic development property to bring in larger users on these sites. I guess with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Porter at this time? All right.
Do we have, Mr. Porter, do we have any understanding of what the cost of developing these parcels to the point where they're prepared for marketing?
We have some, some figures. I don't have those with me, but we do have some. And the EDA is actively marketing the site that's adjacent to the nine-acre site.
I think it depends, John, on how much, how far we want to take it and, you know, what limits we want to go, if we want to put a structure on there, if we want to put a parking lot, or just bring water and sewer, so that would change the numbers there.
All right. Mr. Warner or Ms. Bledsoe, do you want to say anything this evening? Or it's totally optional? No? Okay, great. Yep, with that, we're going to open the public hearing. Are there any speakers this evening? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments?
No, I just would like to say that I've been honored and privileged to be able to work with the EDA this year as the liaison, and I'm very encouraged by the activity that I'm seeing and the proposals that have been laid out, and they've been providing us spreadsheets with all kinds of information, of plans and figures. And I just want to thank you all for your active participation in helping us get these things, working along with Amy Jordan. You all are all doing a great job, and I appreciate very much your efforts, so thank you all.
For the comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve it.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Ms. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Carey.
All right, thank you. That brings us to board considerations. First is a contract award, James City County Marina Improvements Project in the amount of 235,500. And Mr. Carnifax, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to talk a little bit of history about the marina. Most of you are aware we purchased it, we began James City County in 2006 as part of a package deal with Jamestown Beach, so we purchased the beach site and the marina back in the day. And we've, over the last ten, eleven years, we've tried several times to sell the marina to a private operator, owner, and we were unsuccessful. I met several times with large marina operators up and down the East Coast, taking them out there, and so we worked hard to try to sell the marina, and we were unsuccessful. In the recent eighteen to twenty-four months, our Economic Development Authority and Economic Development has worked to get a private business on the facility, so they are on the land. And what I'm going to talk about tonight is really the design engineering of the water-related infrastructure. Step two will be, and we have some money in the budget you see, is to revisit the master plan of the area above the water line. We're going to talk about this design and engineering is really related to the water-related facilities, the boat ramp and the structures there, the covered slips. In 2019, we hope to revisit the master plan and work with EDA and our economic development on what the rest of the property will look like. I think you know some of the challenges that we have had and will have is dredging. We're going to have to dredge this property, so that, in this first phase, it will be design, engineering, permitting. And so after we get through this part, which we hope will be early fall, I'll be able to come back to you as part of the FY twenty budget and say, here's what we believe it's going to take. We will have our permits in place. We're going to have to dispose of this dredging, how much dredging. To give you an example, we interviewed four firms, and just the dredging cost estimates were between 600,000 minimum to 1.3 million. So it depends on, we have to test the material. So this process is really about looking at what we have and doing a design and engineering to complete the water-related projects. Right now, we have about just over 3 million identified in the next four years in the CIP to do the construction part of it. This is just the design and engineering, and then we'll recommend phasing. The challenge with our phasing is how do we get all of this done and have least impact on our boaters and the private operator that's there? So this is not going to be an easy task, but we hope to come back with you with a plan once we get into the design, engineering, and permitting of it. So that's really what this, I'm recommending to you today is as we begin that part of the process. You have a memo before you, and I recommend that we move forward with the resolution, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have at this time about the project.
I have some questions, but I'm not sure if this is the right time, because I needed Mr. Porter to explain a couple of things as well. Would this be the time to?
Yes.
Oh, thanks, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, so Mr. Upson brought up the issue about the safe navigation, and I know I've heard from some citizens as well about the fact that the Coast Guard pulled out of that area and not marking the buoys, and I know it's been happening all up and down this area as well. So to his point, are we going to be able to ensure safe navigation before we proceed with spending money from this point on? And how are we going to be able to ensure safe navigation?
First, let me say that one of your strategic plan goals is to have modern facilities, oh, I'm sorry, modern and update facilities. And the marina itself, I guess, the bulkheads are falling in, we have real problems with the dock, we have a lot of issues with it, so from a good stewardship standpoint, we should be working on this. The other thing is, I think from a safety standpoint, the county really doesn't have the expertise for the mapping and to doing all the things that need to be done to mark the channels. That's the Coast Guard and the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. And I think we should work, in the meantime, we should work to them to try to find a way of marking these facility, marking these dangerous areas. I understand it's not just the, from the marina to the hole in the wall, I think that's the name of it, but also there's some problems along with thoroughfare where they pulled up some buoys. So I think it's a whole lot of area that we need to work with to try to get coordinated, but I think we really need to do what our stewardship requires us to do, and that is to bring the property up to standard. And at the same time, work with the federal and state agencies that are really responsible for the water, the waterways, I mean, they're public waterways.
Well, I know in Matthews that they had, I read about it in the Daily Press, that they even had the congressman coming in and talking about it over there, and the Coast Guard said no, that they weren't going to work. So do we have any way of knowing? Have we talked with anybody from state and federal?
We talked with the Coast Guard.
Okay.
And we will follow up with the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries.
Okay.
It's kind of interesting to me that the more traffic we get, they're pulling up buoys. I mean, it just is something that we, and I think the state that's responsible is the state's water, and we need to work with them to try to get those safety hazards marked.
If you remember, we placed some no-wake zones out on Gordon's Creek next to, and this board approved it, but it had to go to the state for final approval. So anything that we would do on the waterway, we, the county, it would need somebody's approval at the state or federal level. So then it gets back to the associated risk. If we installed it and there is an incident, which I can tell you, the Coast Guard, this was one of the things that led to it, people don't always adhere, just like they don't always adhere to speed limit signs, they don't always adhere to those buoys. And so I've been told through the Coast Guard, when this first surfaced 12 months ago, that was one of the reasons, their inability to maintain the dredging in that area and the movement of that and the associated liability and risk. So I think that's one thing that we will need to think about if we go down this road.
Okay, and I appreciate you clarifying that this, I kind of liken this phase of it to like a short-term vision of getting the area taken care of. And so the boating area and everything that goes down at the marina, is that going to be considered, is that considered under the purview of Parks and Rec?
Well, the Parks and Rec and the county are operating the marina portion, and we kind of, and we contract out the maintenance to a private operator to maintain the boats. And then you have the private business there now, and we hope that with the additional planning that's going forward, that we might get other private businesses down there. And it doesn't mean that the county at some point down the future couldn't find a marina operator to take over, even the county's on sometimes long-term lease, but the county owns the property. If you recall, there were private operators for, up until about two years ago, when the county, when we went in and started operating the marina part of it. So the board will still have that opportunity down the road as it grows, that you might find somebody who wants to come in. But nobody wanted to tackle, and the reason we're standing here is there wasn't a private owner out there that was interested in doing what we're going to have to do, is the dredging and upkeep of what's there. So we're where we knew we would be if we were going to retain that property, so.
Well, I think it warrants a board discussion at some point for us to sit down and take a look at the overall area and have a goal, you know, what do we want, what do we want to do down there? What's, what is this going to look like?
And I think this will help us analyze what's there, what it's going to cost to do it, and then along with what are we going to do up on shore in the future. And I think that's what we can get accomplished, but we need this first analysis done and saying, here's what we need to do. And then before the budget is presented next, in August, or we start working it to get it back to you all next year, there is just over 1.3 million right now sitting in FY nineteen total to do some improvements. Our challenge is going to be, do we want to bite? This price could be 4 million, it could be five and a half, depending on what we find in here. So right now, there's just over 3 million, I think in 2020 and 2021, you've got another million setting out there in the plan. So would we be better off, can we hold, or do we do it in two phases? Or do we do it in three phases? And the impact on the site, that's something that we'll be coming back to you with as a plan and a recommendation. And so, but we need to get the engineering and design work, and we're going to involve the boaters that are out there. We're going to have some meetings and get input from those that are along with the private businesses there. In Jamestown, we've met with them several times. We're going to have, keep the communication open. We'll come up with some concept plans, and we'll get input from those that are actively involved out there. Because it's not going to be easy, it's going to impact people, either the folks that leave their boats in the water all year. If we got to close down the entrance and have a construction entrance around, it's going to impact the brewery now, you know, so this is not going to be an easy task, and you know, phasing it in is, you know, financially, there's the pros of that and there's the cons to it. And so I think, you know, what we want to come back to you with is a plan with some options.
This is really a beautiful piece of property, next to a very historic area, and to me, we have a stewardship, and we need to be responsible towards that stewardship.
And this is part of the plan, prior to you getting on the board, that we started laying out is what we're going to do with this, you know, because we even had, John remembers, even had people wanting to put townhouses out there.
Yes.
And this is part of the plan that we put into place, and that's why we have funding now, because we started putting that away to do this and to move this project forward. And even the boat owners were like, I don't think I'll ever see it. I said, trust me, you'll see it, we're going to get it there, but it's going to take a while. And so we're at the point now where we can move forward on this and start these, you know, now we need, what can we do? We have a rough idea of what we're going to do and a plan of what we're going to do, but we want to make sure that the experts tell us this is the best use of our money and this is what we can do. And, you know, years ago, I kept my boat down there, weren't very many buoys down there marking anything, and most of them was PVC pipe that showed you where the rock were in the turn. So, you know, most of us that boated knew where everything was and marked things as somebody found them. And I think the Coast Guard...
I expect you are going to see some more, after talking to some boaters, you will see some PVC piping out there.
Yep, you will.
Hopefully, we'll have tourists boating in.
And, you know, I think too, once this gets built up to where it should be and becomes a gem in James City County, I think then the Coast Guard will see it in a different light as well, as far as, you know, right now, it's fairly run down. It's been neglected for years. I mean, even when we got it, it was neglected, so, you know.
And I hope we can also actively pursue some opportunities, perhaps to partner with others on the dredging in particular, the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, the state is putting money into the dredging in the Port Hampton Roads, the Department of Defense is going to be doing some dredging in Skiff's Creek area, and there are a lot of other local communities that may have some interest. And perhaps if we had a kind of a broader consortium of communities that wanted to get involved in this, we could get a better rate and a better way of disposing of the dredge materials. So I hope we can think about some ideas like that as well.
We've met with the Corps already, and we will pursue all opportunities for grants. There's several grant opportunities out there. Most of them are going to be small in amount comparison to what, but we are going to research and find as many opportunities as we can to get federal, state, and grant monies.
Well, this may be a great opportunity with the Virginia Environmental Endowments Fund, about $15 million will be spent over the next few years. I think that there will be an interest in cost sharing for their, some of their grants. There may be some good opportunity to draw some significant dollars down for that as well.
What sort of reception did you get from the Army Corps? Because I know when I had talked to the previous county administrator about the dredging, he had mentioned, is there any, do you see any willingness to help us financially from that group, or?
I'm going to defer to Paul Holt on that, when he's had several more conversations with him, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to misstep on this one.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
When we looked before, we did make a formal request for their assistance. They absolutely expressed a willingness and a desire to work with the county. This was a couple of months ago, and if you remember back at the federal budget situation, there's continued to be a number of continuing resolutions for the federal budget. So they, until all that got resolved, they were not able to commit funding to do anything else in addition. So we told them to keep us high on their to-do list, and when the funding and some resources opened up to give us a call, we periodically check back with them as well, but with some of the federal funding situations that going on, they're only able to commit but so much. But, you know, they've expressed an interest. We've met with them three or four times and had good reception, and so.
All right, thank you. They got a lot going on in DC these days, so. Any other? Any other questions for Mr. Carnifex? Okay.
Just one, I'm assuming that Mr. Hippel made reference to the Shaping Our Shores study that was done several years ago, is that still under active consideration in terms of guidance?
Yeah, I think that's what we want to bring back to revisit, is the shaping our shore, both for the Jamestown Beach site and the marina site. Because if you remember, there were several things on those master plans, and before we start working above, up on the ground, we need to go back and revisit those. And I think there were some things that the board at the time liked and didn't like about both of those plans. So, we want to go back and bring you back another plan here in the near future.
Thank you. Is there a motion? The contract award for the James City County Marina Improvement Project?
So moved.
Mr. Porter?
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sattler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That brings us to the contract award, James City County median maintenance in the amount of 116,648. Matt Austin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Kinsman. My name is Matt Austin, I'm in the Parks and Grounds Superintendent for James City County, and I am here to present the contract award for median and mowing maintenance here within James City County. This contract replaces the maintenance of medians currently maintained by the Department of General Services, Grounds Maintenance Division. It encompasses traffic control, trash removal, mowing, trimming, and the application of pesticides in these medians. Although these medians are owned by the Virginia Department of Transportation, they are maintained by the county as part of a beautification agreement. This contract provides a safer working environment for staff, as they will no longer be working on heavily traveled roadways, as well as a reduction in equipment repair due to the rough terrains in these medians. This contract will redirect county resources to maintain county-owned sites such as the Croker Library, Upper County Park, and Little Creek Reservoir, which are currently under a maintenance contract, as well as supporting the increased required maintenance for our stormwater facilities here within the county, and the ability to better maintain and support event sites, setups. I want to emphasize that the funds for the current contract at Upper County Park, the Croker Library, and Little Creek are being used to redirect to this median contract. Following two qualified firms submitted bids to be considered for contract award, the first firm was Stewart Incorporated at $116,648, this is an annual contract. And the second firm was Coastal Lawn Service Incorporated, their bid was $195,080 annually. Stewart Incorporated has performed satisfactory work for James City County in the past and was determined to be the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder. Staff recommends approval of the contract be to Stewart Incorporated.
Mr. Austin, can I just ask you a question? I'm a little bit unclear about, so we're redirecting funds from the library and Upper County Park and so forth, and is that then going to be taken over by General Services for maintenance?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions?
I have a question. The, is this include, this contract, does it include a pre-pickup of trash and all before they cut to make sure that we're not grinding that up into the?
Absolutely, that is the contract, that is important in the contract, and we still use the labor from the jail on two days a week, where if in between the weekly or bi-weekly time this staff is out here, then the jail crew will be out there continually clean up as they have done in the past.
And speaking of that, can we get them more days? Is there, the jail crew?
There's a lot of demand for those crews, I can tell you, Mr.-
I know, that's why I'm asking. If we can get three days.
That would be nice, yep. Well, I have two days for the general service, for the grounds division myself, general services has it for another day for other projects, and then we share them with two other municipalities, so we're, they're capped out on what they can do for us.
Are you going to be the person responsible for supervising that there's such a huge difference in the bids? So, but you've dealt with Stewart in the past and feel confident that it will be done well?
Absolutely. The contract at the library and the other two locations, Stewart Incorporated currently has that project.
Okay.
So, we've been using that and very familiar, they also have contracts with GCSA also, so we're very familiar and very pleased with the work that they do.
Okay. And I was hoping that, you know, as we move along, that we might be able to add some beautification on 199. Some of those medians really need an updo, so to speak. Has there been any talk about, I mean, I'm sure it's probably a lot more cost-effective to just get out and mow grass versus going around beds and that type of thing. But it is a, it sort of is the entrance, you know, that where the tourist gets off that exit and goes there. Has there been any talk about any enhancing of any of those medians at any point?
Absolutely, there has been, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Holt, because we have been in conversation about that, and we're under the direction of their direction on what areas are planted and the reasons why.
Yeah. You're just so needed, Paul.
We, again, just have established a really good working relationship between the two departments with senior landscape planner being located in community development. We have that history with some of the original plantings that went in prior to the 2007 celebrations. And most recently, we've worked with General Services to come up with a replanting plant into the gateway on 199 at the, up at the York County end, do some replantings. And to your point, we always look for those efficiencies, planting in long linear beds instead of separating things out, really working with the maintenance crew to select the varieties of trees that require less maintenance than some of the ones that are really problematic. The thriving conditions in those medians is just horrible, so you've really got to pick really hardy species, so there's a lot that goes into that. So, we're starting there because those trees had sort of reached the end of their natural life and had been run over multiple times, so we're shifting some of those locations. So, you'll start to see, if not already, some of those trees start to go back there. So, that will, that will be some immediate short-term, and then we're, again, collaboratively working between the two departments to inventory, do a more comprehensive inventory of the rest of the gateways and the intersections, and then systematically, systematically come up with replanting plans, again, as part of the maintenance, when those trees and shrubs need to be replaced to do something there. Keep the color in there, keep some of the vibrancy, keep those looking good for as much of the calendar year as possible, so.
But what really drew my attention back to it was, I just spent six days in Lynchburg, and there, a lot of their medians are sponsored by local businesses, and so they're very well-maintained. And I'm sure it's done by somebody else, but they must pay a fee for that. And so, that got my attention when I came back home to try to see what ours, and I thought, yeah, some of ours need a little work, but I wouldn't be opposed to a program, you know, as we move forward of doing something like that as well. But I appreciate what you're saying and the synergy that seems to be going on.
It's a neat program that the town uses, I think it's promoted by the state, we'll have to look into it to see if it's an option available for counties.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because it didn't seem to just be in the city, it seemed to go out further, because I actually was staying 20 minutes away from the city of Lynchburg and noticed it there as well, so. All right, thank you. Any further? All right, thank you so much. With that, Mr. Porter?
Do you have a motion?
Do we have a motion? Yes. Thank you.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sattler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And thank you for asking for the motion. That brings us to resolution requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board name Route 60 Pocahontas Trail from Route 199 to the corporate limits of the city of Williamsburg as the Judge William T. Stone Memorial Highway. I believe Supervisor McGlinnan will be presenting this.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. As you all know, not long ago, we lost one of our distinguished local citizens, Judge William Stone. Judge Stone had a number of distinctions associated with him, he's reputed to have been the first African-American judge in the Commonwealth. As our resolution points out, he probably founded the first integrated law firm in the Commonwealth and served a long and distinguished career, both on the bench as a substitute judge and as an operator of a funeral home that has been an important part of the community. His family requested that we consider designating a portion of Route 60 East in his honor, and as part of that process, and I appreciate the board's willingness to support this notion, they agreed that they would cover the costs that are required by VIDA to be borne by the locality. And so, we're asking that the Department of Transportation designate the area on Route 60 East from the Williamsburg city line to Route 199 in honor of Judge Stone.
Thank you. Your motion?
No, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Sattler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. With that, it's, we need to amend our board calendar, Mr. Purse is going to come try to help us untangle this mess.
We're going to try to do what we couldn't get done off of the phone.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Four dates have originally been proposed for work sessions in April. On the original board calendar, the 17th and 19th of April were advertised as potential work session dates. Subsequent to that, when the ad for the budget went out separately, the 24th and the 26th were also advertised, so you all have, before you tonight, a chance to choose which of those two dates you would like to use in April for work sessions. Based on the conversations that we had over email, it sounded like the 17th and the 19th might be the best overall dates, if we think about the potential moving up of the meeting on the 19th at 3:00.
Which I know that Mr. Hippel was worried about the 19th being back in time.
And I could be, I might be back, depends on how quick our meeting is and if I get into traffic. So, if I don't, I could be-
Traffic? That would be your problem.
Yeah. But, you know, if I'm running a few minutes late, you know, y'all can get started, and I'll pull on in quickly behind, if you want to start at 3:00, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll try to wrap ours up up there quick enough that I can get back here by 3:00.
Okay.
And then we've got a community meeting at 6:00 up in Tuana.
Right. So, I need, if you think the night, so let's start with the 19th. Do we think the 19th at 3:00 will work?
I can do that. Do that. I'm running a little behind, I'll just slip on in.
You just have a really busy afternoon.
Let's put on our roller skates.
Okay. The 17th at 4:00, does that work?
It works, yep.
Now, I am going to scoot out if we're not done. My daughter, my senior, is being recognized at the school board meeting that evening at 6:30, and I would really like-
Is it possible we can move that one up to 3:00 as well?
That would be so much appreciated.
Sure.
Does that work, 3:00? Okay, thank you.
We're talking both the-
Thank you, what's our last one?
17th and 19th at 3:00 then.
For both of them.
The 17th at 3:00 and the 19th at 3:00.
Yes, sir.
But then we still have our regular work session on the 24th?
No.
24th is your regular work session, if you need it, I would-
I thought that there was a problem with the 24th, is that right?
No, the only problem was the 26th.
Oh, so why, well, I thought Ms. Larson had a problem with the 24th.
Oh, but, that's right, but I will make it-
Because if we did, if the 24th is available, why don't we just do the 19th and the 24th then, or the 17th and the 24th, one or the other?
Whether you want to do really two or three?
I'm okay for any of those, but-
Do you think we're going to need three?
Well, if we don't need them, we can always cancel.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, do we want to keep it at?
17th, 19th, 24th.
Well, no, I was thinking we just needed the two.
I think we get it too.
So, should we do the 17th and 19th, and then if we don't need, then we can cancel the 24th if we don't need the 24th?
Fine with me.
Will that work?
Yep.
Okay.
So, question mark on the 24th.
That work for staff?
Oh, anything you say works for staff.
I just love you, Mr. Porter.
So, the 24th was our, was our original date, but I thought that-
Well, it was, and that was total, I apologize, there were so, the other day-
So, is the 24th okay for you?
I think the best thing, if we could, if we could kind of lock in our normal meeting date, that would be, that would be preferable-
Would that be better?
It seems to me. And then we could do the 17th, which would mean we wouldn't have to worry about Mr. Hippel getting here late, and we wouldn't have to rush up to the-
Tuana?
Yep.
Okay.
So, if we did the 17th and the 24th, would that work?
Yes, but could-
At 3:00 on the 17th and at 4:00 on the 24th, or 3:00, I don't know.
That work?
You need 3:00 on the 24th.
We can do either.
Now, 4:00 is, 4:00, yeah.
So, 3:17, 4:24, and bag the 19th.
Yep.
My calendar looks like a mess.
My mercies.
Jason, I hope you're doing this in pencil.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion on what you just did?
Hold on one second.
Madam Chair, now would probably be a good time, too. We talked a little bit earlier about, I don't know that the administration had anticipated the community meetings as being a board meeting, but the chairman indicated she might want that to be a board meeting, so if it is, we, now's a good time to resolve that.
Yeah.
Right, because as it is now, we don't have that as a meeting, so we wouldn't really be able to interact at the budget, community budget meeting, or we would just be sort of scattered amongst-
So, to make it strictly legal, and we would put it on our calendar here as a board meeting, so we could all attend and participate, what would be the requirements for opening, closing, and minutes and stuff?
We would run it like a regular meeting, and actually, because the, I understand the next one is two days away, we would actually continue this meeting to that meeting, because I don't have three business days to advertise.
I don't have three business days to advertise.
If you want the second community meeting to be a regular meeting, we can advertise it under FOIA advertisement, we'll just amend your calendar now to include it, and that will work.
So, you're talking about the ones on the 12th and the 16th?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so I'm going to move that, do we need to move to continue this meeting to the? Well, just at the very end of the meeting, we'll just continue it. We just won't adjourn. So, we don't need to worry about the 12th? So, in my hearing, you'd like to have that be a meeting. So, what we'll do is we'll adjourn this meeting to the 12th at that time, and then if you'd like the 16th-
And so, then I would move that we amend our calendar to add a meeting at 6:30 on April 16th at the Croker Library.
And the 12th.
And the 12th.
The 12th at Legacy Hall.
No, no, we're keeping this meeting.
Oh, you're going to, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
We don't need to include that in our calendar changes, okay? That we add April 17th at 3:00 p.m. for a work session on the budget, and that our meeting on the 24th is already scheduled and on the calendar, isn't it?
4:00.
Okay.
So, that's all we need to do, just to add those two meetings on the 16th and the 17th.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my, that's my motion.
Okay. Mr. Porter?
Take it now, Bill.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And thank you for asking for the motion. That brings us to resolution requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board name Route 60 Pocahontas Trail from Route 199 to the corporate limits of the city of Williamsburg as the Judge William T. Stone Memorial Highway. I believe Supervisor McGlinnan will be presenting this. So, we will do service authority, I will move, thank you, Mr. Hippel, so I will adjourn.
What about directives?
Do you want to do board request directives, or do you want to?
Want to take a recess?
We'll do board request and directives, and then, the reports of the county administrator. I'm just skipping over, I need to, obviously, we're bifocals at this meeting, so board request and directives.
I'll go ahead and start if I may. First is an item that really is not county government business, but the result of a communication I had from a constituent who was quite concerned about very high bills that she had just received from Virginia Natural Gas. And she indicated she was on a budget plan, and that this bill was a significant increase over her previous bills. In examining the issue, and actually looking at my bill, I found that, and I just want to make this for informational purposes for the community, in case people are worried about this, on your March and April bills, there is a surcharge that reflects a catch-up from a state corporation commission-approved increase in rates that was effective as of December 22nd, and they were able to get the bills adjusted in time for the February bill, but they had to catch up here. So, in both March and April, there's an additional cost that will make your bill appear significantly higher. In May, it should still be higher than it was last year, but not quite as eye-popping as the bills that folks are receiving right now. So, I just wanted to bring that to folks' attention. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I've had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks, and looking forward to in the near future, the opportunity to participate in Habitat for Humanity events. Two groundbreakings, both in Grove, really on the same larger parcel of land, where there are 4 homes that will ultimately have been built. One of them was sponsored by Anheuser-Busch. They are going to be the main group that is building this particular site, and our local folks from Anheuser-Busch are really excited about doing this project. The groundbreaking celebrated the fact that Mohammed and Fazia Marouf and their family will be moving here from Newport News to occupy that home, which they will buy from Habitat with a no-interest loan and sweat equity that they're putting into the home. Mohammed Marouf is, was a surgeon in Afghanistan until he came to the United States about 3 years ago. He worked for the United States in the U.S. Embassy, and as a result, had to seek asylum for his family's protection. Mrs. Marouf is a lawyer, was trained as a lawyer in Afghanistan. Unfortunately, both of them have certificates that don't carry over to the United States, and so, they are working in different fields now. Mrs. Marouf is actually raising the family at the moment as her primary responsibility, but Mr. Marouf works for Catholic charities now as a caseworker for them. And then, our Walmart Distribution Center is the lead on a home that's being built for Lakeia Rutley and her family, and they are going to be moving down from Tuano to the Grove area as well. Next week, there will be, I think it's next week, ribbon cuttings for 6 homes that were constructed in the Moses Lane area near James Terrace. So, Habitat has been making a very significant contribution to addressing the need for affordable housing in the community, and they are just a wonderful organization to work with, and I hope folks will support them. That's it.
And I just wanted to add, I got the chance to attend both of those, and they were very, very nice ceremonies. I strongly support what Habitat Humanities is doing for our community. 2 other things that I participated in, one was probably more fun for the dogs than it was for me, was the Dog Street Strut, as a fundraiser for Heritage Humane, and Heritage Humane does a wonderful job in our community. Apparently, they raised a considerable amount of money. They had like 400 participants, dogs and owners, and there were quite a few, I think I had 6 or 7 dogs that were out there, they were hard-to-adopt dogs, and most of them found homes. So, it was a very successful day. As I said, my dogs took the mile down and the mile back better than my knees did, so. The other things I've participated in, they did WMBG radio interview on the 21st and a podcast on March 22nd. I've been very active with Peninsula Council for Workforce Development, several meetings. We're in the middle of a reorganization restructuring and some financial issues that I briefed the board on. Ms. Larson and I have attended the school liaison committee meetings, and I have talked to other board members about it. I think we've established a really good line of communication. I think we've opened up a good dialogue on how we can agree on some things, such as the enrollment projections, capacity, and we are now wrestling with how we determine what these tipping points are, where we might need to think about starting construction. So, I'm very pleased about that. I did put in a request to Mr. Carroll at VDOT about a traffic study over on Airport Road. You probably have heard from constituents, I have too. If you go to the dog park over at Waller Mill Park, you can sit there for 10 or 12 light cycles and not move at all. So, there's a real problem there. The solution is probably not going to be easy, but it's something that I think are, it's getting much worse. So, step 1 is the study, and they promised that they'll do that in the next 60 to 90 days. And I did want to also thank Mr. Carroll for a very prompt response to dealing with some drainage issues over on Cooley Road and Dura Road for some constituents.
I just have one thing this evening. Mr. Kinsman, sir. As a result of continued complaints and concerns in the Colonial Heritage and surrounding properties on Centerville Road, I am requesting that you prepare a proposed revision to County Code 3-20, running at large prohibited, to prohibit the owners of A1 properties north of Centerville Road between Colonial Heritage and Lightfoot Marketplace from allowing their dogs to run at large at any time of the year. And I was wondering if we might be able to have this ready for our June 12th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm good.
Thanks. I just, well, today, I got to go speak to the national active and retired federal employees out at Colonial Heritage. They gave me this nice coffee mug, so I want to thank them, and I want to thank Jose Ribero with James City County Staff and Renee Dahlman for all their help. This was about the solar farm out in Norge, and that's what they wanted to hear about. And so, I said that they had any further questions to contact Supervisor Sadler, so that worked out great. They do have a couple of follow-up questions that I will need to get with staff on, but I'm glad that Mr. Eisenhower brought up the podcast. Renee Dahlman does a great job, I think, on the podcasts are interesting. We've, I think, have we all done one?
I haven't done one yet.
I think we have 2 so far.
So, and if you follow James City County on any kind of social media, she lets you know when a new one's out and how to get, how to subscribe and listen to it, and they're always interesting topics. Along those same lines, we have been very fortunate, the WMBG Radio has a member of the Board of Supervisors on Wednesdays at 5:00, between 5:00, 5:15. Short, little spotlight, but it gives us an opportunity to talk about things that are happening in the county. And I also appreciate Renee with that, because I'm often sending her a text going, hey, send me some stuff that's happening in the county that I can have right at the ready, so appreciate that. We've talked about the, our budget schedule, and we'll make sure that we get that up on our web, so it's more clear. And just a reminder that there is a household chemical collections and computer recycling at War Hill High School that's done by the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority, and that will be done this Saturday, April 14, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I'm sure there's probably more information on our website, so that's that. That brings us to the reports of the county administrator.
Just want to remind the public, we talked about it just now, on April 12th at 6:30, we'll have a community meeting on the budget at Legacy Hall at 4301 Newtown Avenue, and on April 16th at 6:30 p.m., the community meeting will be held at the James City County Library at 7770 Croker Road. Also, on the website is where we need your input in the search for the next county administrator. There is a survey on there, it'll take maybe 15 to 20 minutes to do, but to look for the, kind of give an oversight of the individual that you would like to see serve as your county administrator. I think the end time for that survey is April 16th, so please do it as soon as you can. And at the end of this meeting, recess to the 12th. Let me continue to the 12th.
All right.
Madam Chair, I don't know whether board members feel the need to have a closed session. If not, I'm prepared to go ahead and act on the memoranda which we received for the appointments.
I'm okay with that as well, but I don't know if others feel differently.
So, if that's the case, I would move that we designate Denise Kirschbaum for the WADA Board for a term expiring on June 30, 2022, and Rebecca Vinroot as the alternate for that position. The alternate does not have a fixed term, and so, she would just continue on until we replaced her with someone else. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Linda Knight, Linda Wallace-Cody, Scott Van Voorhees, and Larry Walk to be nominated for terms which would expire on April 12, 2022. Elizabeth Peterson to be re-designated for the Clean County Commission for a term that would expire on April 24, 2021, and for the Board of Building Adjustment and Appeals, Jeffrey Barra for a term that would expire on April 10, 2023. So, I'd move the designation of all those individuals for boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Sis Isenhau.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. All right. With that, I.
Continue this meeting to April 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Legacy Hall.
So, I'm going to move to continue this meeting till April 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Legacy Hall. Mr. Porter, do we need to vote on that, or?
Yeah.
No? Okay. And I'm going to pass the gavel.
Aye.
To rest. Thank you.
Call to order, this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening.
Call the roll.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
With that, public comment, do we have any speaker cards this evening? No? Okay. Consent calendar, minutes, adoption, March 13, 2018, regular meeting.
Motion?
Voice vote would be fine.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one public hearing this evening, public hearing on FY 2019, 2020, James City Service Authority budget. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. The proposed FY 1920, James City Service Authority budget primarily focuses on 2 of the county's strategic plan goals, sustainable long-term water supply and modern infrastructure facilities and technology systems. Highlights of the proposed budget include continuing to seek and evaluate water supply options, continuing to set aside funds for an alternative water supply reserve, $500,000 in FY 19 and $1 million in FY 20, and also for the repair and replacement reserve, $617,000 in FY 19 and $681,000 in fiscal year 20. Other highlights include accelerating the residential meter replacement program by using reserves to complete the project by the end of fiscal year 20. There are 2 new CIP projects in the budget, both betterment projects, which allows improvements to be made to JCSA's infrastructure in coordination with VDOT projects, meaning that we can accomplish those upgrades at a much lower cost than we would if we were doing them alone. We will continue to focus on our asset management efforts, and there are 4 new positions in the budget, 2 apprentices in the water distribution section, which will help us address both preventative and emergency maintenance. There's also a technology support technician to assist with reliability and cybersecurity issues in our technology systems, and we're proposing a maintenance specialist position to assist with approving efficiency and safety at our 108 facilities. The proposed budget continues the recommendations of the comprehensive rate study to incrementally increase rates over a 10-year period to address the effects of aging infrastructure. The proposed changes to the fixed charges and service rates are shown on this slide above. The total monthly water and sewer bill for JCSA customers for a typical 5,000 gallon a month residential user, the increase would be $2.74 per month. The typical bill would go from $36.21 to $38.95 on a monthly basis. The combined bill would remain the second lowest in the Hampton Roads region. I would note that there are no changes proposed for facility charges, though there is a proposed increase of $40 per year for the grinder pump program, bringing the cost to the customer from $260 to $300. These proposed changes sustain JCSA's strong financial position that merited a bond rating upgrade in 2016, and also reduce reliance on facility charges. I would note that as proposed, 40% of our annual debt service payments would be made from the operating fund this year, up from 20% last year, and part of a long-term plan to fund all of the debt service from operating revenues rather than facility charges. In addition, a larger portion of the FY 19 CIP will be funded through operating revenues as opposed to previous years. I would recommend the board open the public hearing, and after receiving public comment, close the public hearing.
Any questions for me? No? So, we will open the public hearing, no speaker cards, we'll close the public hearing, and this item is scheduled, correct, from May 8?
That's correct. Adoption is scheduled for May 8, no action necessary at this time.
All right, very good. Board considerations, we have our contract award manhole and wet well rehabilitation services.
The resolution before you authorizes the award of a contract for manhole and wet well rehabilitation services to 2 companies, Lidle Utilities Incorporated and Progressive Environmental Services LLC. These, the services have been ongoing for quite some time, they're in response to the consent order, so this has been an ongoing effort. The contracts that we currently have in place are about to expire, necessitating the need to renew them. I would note, you may have noticed that there's no dollar figure associated with this contract award. That's because we determine those costs as we evaluate our manholes and wet wells as we go through the year, so we don't know the exact amount ahead of time. We work with the contractor, they provide us per-unit costs, and we go forward in that manner. I would note that we typically have spent about $100,000 a year on this effort, and we expect to continue to spend about that same amount of money on a yearly basis. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Question?
The adoption, the resolution.
Voice vote, I believe, is okay on this one?
I believe for board consideration, roll call.
Okay. Mr. Powell.
Okay. Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
With that, we have board requests and directives. Anyone?
I had one question later, earlier today, from a constituent, and I will give you the name and address at the close of the meeting, but it's within Forts Colony, and it has to do with the clearing of the right-of-way issue.
Okay.
Apparently, some of it appears to be in the PSA, and I think I need to make you aware of that, so you can talk to them. The other thing was, I guess, from our earlier discussions about the Wendy's, finding out if we are building into our longer-range plans, the ability to extend some of these services out to areas where we might want some of this development to occur, so we don't have to continue what we're doing right now. Is that something that's been considered, or is that something we need to bring up anew with you, or?
If that's something the board wishes to consider, then I would seek that guidance from the board. That type of extension or expansion of our infrastructure has not typically been part of the JCSA business model. Typically, that type of development is funded by the developers and not by JCSA. It's not to say it can't be, but again, I would seek guidance from the board before evaluating those.
I think it'd be a good, at least to have the debate internally to see whether we think it's even worth the effort, you know? Waiting for a developer to come pick up the tab to do it, that's one way to operate. It depends on what we're trying to. to accomplish with some of the economic opportunity areas here. Or to discussing it at a later date.
Is that something that you can put together and guide us in a discussion?
I suppose. That's not very specific guidance, but I can probably work on something. The other consideration is that, given where we are in terms of our long-term water supply planning, at a staff level, I don't know that we would necessarily encourage looking at any significant expansions at this time. I think that's got to be factored into this as well.
I'd be very reluctant to move away from the expectation that the costs for such a significant infrastructure improvement be borne by the developer.
I'd be more interested in finding out what the cost would be to extend something like that. I mean, you know, from...
Are you...
John may be absolutely correct. That's something we may not be willing to spend. You know, at 3,600 feet, I don't know, is that a million? Is it 6 million? You know, what is it?
Right, right.
I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
So are you asking for some calculations on that site specifically?
I would be curious about some calculations on that site, just to satisfy my curiosity, if nothing else about...
Right.
You know, it may well just reinforce what John says. It's not something we want to do until somebody comes along who has a vested interest in making it happen.
Providing some estimates on a specific site is something that I think we can do fairly easily. To do something on a general basis, expansion of utilities is... It really is, in terms of trying to project costs, is very site-specific. Depending on topography and other issues, the costs can vary dramatically, but if you're asking for a specific site, then I think I can respond to that.
Thank you.
I would almost see it being, looking at more the land we just purchased, and the EDA has a potential of having services in there, and the ability to do that, then further up in the Toano area, because that's gonna... Whatever it goes by is gonna spur more development. Maybe not exactly what we're looking for. I think it'd be better if we put a plan together. We want to go to one site, and at that site, we want to develop that into a commercial site of some sort. I think we've got more of a potential down in the Grove area to develop those three sites that we have, and that would give us a bigger bang for our buck to draw in more economic development into that park than it would be up 60, or up old 60.
And they're on the front burner right now, anyway.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Right.
Okay. I think I've got a clearer picture of what you're asking for, so, okay.
That clears my... Is that all from everyone? With that, your update, Mr. Powell?
Only one item. We are working with Newport News Water Works in an attempt to revise some billing schedules. Newport News Water Works is going to a monthly billing cycle. So for our... For JCSA sewer customers who are Newport News Water, we're gonna convert them to a monthly billing cycle as well, so that they will have a consistent billing cycle for both their water and sewer. So that's just for JCSA sewer customers who are also Newport News Water Works customers.
I think I know whose district that is. You'll be getting the calls.
And that's all I have for my update. Counselor, should we continue until the 12th as well?
If you want to talk about JCSA issues, yes.
Yes. So...
So you will continue this meeting, rather than adjourn, you will continue this meeting till 6:30 PM on April 12 at Legacy Hall in Newtown.
6:30.
What he said. All in favor?
Aye.
Are we good? We good to go?
Okay.
Have we got?
Thank you.
All right, that's it.